I would like to call to order the January 24th, Saldana City Council Regular Council Meeting to Order. If you would please rise as we do the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the rule?
Vice Mayor Parker?
Present.
Mr. Carey?
Present.
Mr. Chilson?
Present.
Ms. Hutchings?
Present.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Ms. Whackler?
Present.
Mr. Cassidy?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Councilmember Carey, second by Councilmember Hutchings. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Councilmember Chilson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. I would move to remove Resolution 2024-003 requesting that the state of Alaska make a meaningful increase to the base student allocation for public schools from the consent agenda for discussion. I'd like to speak to that later tonight.
Are there any objections? Seeing none. Are there any other changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
January 10, 2024, council meeting minutes. Ordinance 2024-004, rezoning Hillcrest subdivision lots 5, 8, 9, and 10 of Block 3, Airport subdivision lot 1 of the emergency center replat, and Airport subdivision lot 0, 1, and 2 of Block 2 be rezoned from commercial to industrial on the official zoning map brought to you by the city manager. The public hearing will be on February 14th. Resolution 2024-004, petitioning the Alaska State Alcohol Beverage Control Board to issue 20 additional restaurant or eating place licenses within the city of Saldana as authorized by Alaska statute 4.11.405, brought to you by the city manager. Action Memorandum 2024-003, confirming appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission, brought to you by the mayor, and Action Memorandum 2024-004, request for an excused absence from the February 14th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting, brought to you by Vice Mayor Parker. That is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of these items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your phone. I see no one here in the council chambers. Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, seeing no one on Zoom wishing to speak. Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. At this time, I would like to introduce Chief Meek to present some awards to his department. Thank you, Chief Meek.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's very important to recognize our officers when they do anything. And I think one of the greatest--
Chief, can you turn that microphone on, please?
There we go. I think it's very important to acknowledge the good deeds of our officers, and I can't think of one that's higher than that of saving the life of enough. This recognition is something that has actually been given several times since I became Chief of Police here, and it's one that I really endears me because what's happening is people are given a second chance at life. Even if they make a mistake, they're given a second chance to go out and rectify their wrongs. And in this situation, that's exactly what occurred. On the night of November 13th, about quarter till midnight, a young lady was going home. She'd gotten off work. She happens to look over at our skate park and sees a couple men laying outside their vehicle. There's some snow on the ground. She thinks it's unusual, makes a phone call. When that phone call comes in, Officer Culver is one of the first ones to respond. Fortunately for us, he's got experience as a Army Combat Medic. He shows up, recognizes the situation for what it is. It's a triple overdose. Three gentlemen thought they were indulging in one narcotic. Turns out that they were indulging in something that was not what they suspected, and all three had were overdosing and were in bad states of repair. Sergeant Clary and Officer Han showed up, and between the three of them, they began administering Narcan, a couple doses for each person, started life-saving first aid CPR, held one until ambulance staff got there, got all three to the hospital. I was serious enough that two of those young men got flown out from our hospital to get further more in-depth treatment. If it wasn't for the life-saving measures of our officers, those three men wouldn't be here today. They would not have that second chance at life to go forward and improve their lives and be with their families. So I'd like to call forward Sergeant Clary, Officer Culver, Officer Han, and present them with a life-saving award for recognition through the Saldana Police Department.
Sergeant, I will start with you. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I appreciate your role.
Thank you.
Thank you, officers, and thank you, Chief Meek. And thank you to the individual who made that phone call and that the officers were able to show up. Quite a special moment. Moving on to public comments and presentations. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lila Rosen, and due to my address is 36693 Chinalna Drive. My husband and I are here today to revisit the city's water sewer code 1316040, utility expansion charges. We did put out a request. We respectfully asked the council to propose a code change in water and sewer expansion fees that, number one, aligns the city of Saldana fee with its adjacent cities of Kenai at $479 or sewored $331 and is simply a flat fee across the board, or number two, remove the fee altogether, like the city of Homer has. I've submitted a spreadsheet for you all to look at the exact fee that we're requesting be looked at and the exact code. We believe the following reasons support this change. This particular code was written in 1986, and it is our stance that this code no longer makes sense for Saldana or people who want to invest in Saldana. Having a more simplified, updated revision of this code makes sense today in 2024. The city of Saldana is in a very solid financial position, and this change would have minimal impact financially to either the Water Sewer Fund or Saldana's General Fund, but may have a greater impact to someone looking to invest and developing in Saldana. I've spoken with people against annexing, and they may warm up to annexing if Saldana offers an olive branch such as this fee modification, which currently costs more than what other communities offer people. And you can bet that we will be right there having conversations with our friends, business friends, and coworkers, saying, "Look, we took an issue to this city council about an outdated code. They listened, they heard us, and they changed it." And for the naysayers who will respond, "Well, they changed it for you guys," we can tell them no. They changed it for everyone. No matter who you are, this change saves every new user money. And the council did that for citizens, investors, and developers all the same. The city of Saldana often says they are proponent of development and business owners who want to invest locally, but this code, as it is now, says the opposite of that. Changing it helps Saldana become a champion of free enterprise. A few council members asked us what our reason was for requesting this change now, and if maybe we just didn't realize or know that these fees existed, but we would like to share the reason behind our why. We built a duplex in Saldana in 2015 that we still own today. We paid the hookup fee then. It was a few thousand dollars. But having never built anywhere else, we just accepted the fee. We didn't deep dive into the comparison into other cities until we were building the car wash on K Beach. In June of 2023, I was filling out the application with Brianna, and she couldn't find the fees. And Kyle said, "It's there. It's the really big one." And at the time, he said it would be $47,000, and the city offers not much more than a green light to hook up for that fee. The owner-builder burdens all other costs, putting in all the dirt work to city specs, plumbing, water, sewer lines, meter that the city charges business owners their monthly bill on. So I left and told my husband that fee included literally nothing more than a thumbs up. After that, we started researching more, and when it made no logical sense to us to be so much more expensive in Saldana, in addition to all of this, when we brought it to the light of day, nobody in the city could speak to the why of it either. And this crazy fee for a thumbs up was, in some instances, up to 100 times more than Kenai, Seward, and Homer. But the real game changer for us was actually one month prior to all this. In May of 2023, Scott's mom, Linda, was in the hospital here locally, and our whole family was there, including his sister, who is a chief nursing officer in upstate New York. It was during that time that her doctor told us that because of an existing hospital policy, there was nothing we could do to help alleviate her suffering. She did also have a DNR and living will, so nothing we could have done would have, on our end, would have changed the outcome. This policy did not make sense, and because of that policy, she suffered for an additional 24 hours unnecessarily before she passed away. Please don't get me wrong. We are not complaining about our local hospital. We honestly do love it, and we did let them know how we felt about that after it happened. But afterwards, Scott's sister said, "I am a CNO. I write policies like this, but I never realized how they affected the actual patients or boots-on-the-ground people, and I will be making changes when I get home." Scott and I agreed then that if we saw something in our community that no longer made sense, we would speak about it, and for us, and for us, also for others. One month later, code 1316040 came to our attention. We realize it's not healthcare, but it is an example of something that no longer works for our local community members, and we are speaking up right now for everyone moving forward that this may impact. The takeaway for us is that nearly 40 years ago, we were a growing city, and maybe this made sense then. But nobody here can speak to that because none of us were involved in 1986 when that code was written. In the spirit of what Saldana has already been trying to do by encouraging development and expansion, this council has the ability to right-size the code by amending a change to make the fee structure simple moving forward for every citizen, business owner, and developer that wants to lay down roots, build, live, and invest, and work here. And you can all help make that happen and make it make sense today. In the words of Ronald Reagan, "If you want more of something, subsidize it. If you want less of something, tax it." Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosen. Are there any questions from council members? Seeing no questions, thank you so very much. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make any public comment or presentation on items that are not appearing on the agenda? Does anyone have their hands raised on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
Ma'am.
Okay. Seeing nobody else that wishes to make any public comments or presentations, we will move on to Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? Assemblymember Cox, please.
Thank you, Tyson Cox, Borough Assembly, Saldana Seat. I was just gonna let you know a few things that we've been up to. We have definitely been accomplishing things, but they are not things that have been very controversial. So our last three meetings, I think if you add them together, is probably still shorter than one of our longer meetings. So we've been busting through them pretty well. A couple of things that we have done, and I will speak to this one again later when it comes up on the agenda, but we did pass a resolution asking for an increase in the BSA, and I'm happy to see that coming forward today. Again, I'll speak to that in a little bit. The other item that is not just our regular workings would be our logo. I don't know if you've heard a lot about that happening, but we do have a logo change. If you haven't seen it yet, please go onto our website. They have started changing some of those. It will definitely take some time, so I encourage everyone to play the whole hide-and-seek of see how many times you can find the old logo, because I'm sure it will be popping up here and there for quite some time. We've also had many updates for the fire department and how that's coming along. I know I've spoken to a few of you. In the last planning and zoning meeting for Saldana, they did pass the institutional, so I'm glad to see that moving forward from commercial to institutional. Plating was passed, and then the conditional use permit was postponed. I would encourage each of you to go and watch that video so we can resolve that. I think there's definitely issues that can be resolved pretty quickly. Hopefully, that can move forward after the next meeting. But other than that, if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Assemblymember Cox. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have, Madam Clerk, anybody attending by Zoom to provide a legislative report?
No.
Okay, thank you. That moves us on to Item 7, Public Hearings. We have ordinances. Ordinance 2024-001, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $36,000 in the utility fund for increases in fees for the disposal of de-watered biosolids introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Carey and Councilmember Hutchings. A report from the city manager, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This ordinance really comes before you because of the increase in fees at the borough level. The current rate is $45 per ton, and the new rate is $135 per ton. And it went into effect on January 1st, so we're increasing our budget to match those fees, and it'll be budgeted in further budgets, the full amount, moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing nobody here in council chambers. Do we have any? No hands raised on Zoom. Seeing nobody else, no one who wishes to speak. Are there any council member comments? Councilmember Carey.
To the city manager, could you help in terms of provide the increase in terms of it was and what is it now for the borough?
It was $45 and now per ton, and now it is $135 per ton.
Wow, so 200 and some percent increase. It's good borough government. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. Approximately, how much do we dispose of each year in biosolids?
I'm going to ask our utilities director to speak to answer your question.
Good evening. Last year, it was in excess of 200 tons.
So 200 tons at $45 a ton went to 200 tons at $135 a ton.
Yes, ma'am.
Significant, significant increase. Councilmember Carey.
Could you provide the information in terms of the increase in cost of the borough to provide this service for us in the last few years?
Increase from the borough?
Yeah, has there been some changes so that they're now having to spend more money in order to provide this service? So I'm trying to see the relationship between the huge increase they're asking from us, and I'm just wondering if their costs went up.
I don't know the answer to that question. I have not been involved in the borough conversation as far as increased costs.
Thank you.
So the borough provided no rationale for the increase in the fee?
That is correct, Vice Mayor.
So may I follow? Go ahead, Mr. Corey Neills.
I can probably shed a little light on this through my relationships with the borough. We were notified after the city of Saldana annual operating budget had passed that the borough was proposing this rate increase, which is why this is before you tonight and wasn't in our operating budget to begin with. And I believe the rationale was that they were bringing it in line with other landfills in the state of Alaska, consistent with Anchorage Valley and others. And so their rationale is that they'd been under--the fees had been much too low for many years. So their costs perhaps have not changed, but they had been undercharging for their activities to date. That's my understanding.
Councilmember Carey.
Well, I certainly hope they advertise that they've increased taxes on the people of the borough by doing this. I'm sure they held that up very strongly that they were increasing taxes on us.
So our fees went from $9,000 to $27,000. Significant increase. And if we were not to enact this and accept this, then I guess we wouldn't be able to use the borough transfer site.
That is correct. We would be stuck with biosolids.
And what would we do with it?
Vice Mayor, we don't have, I mean, truly, we don't have a viable option, other viable option. We don't have the capacity to hold the biosolids, and so we do need to be in partnership with the borough on this one.
Any other additional council member comments? Seeing none. Can we call for the vote?
Carey?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Reluctantly, yes.
Cassidy?
No.
You have five yes votes.
By a vote of five to one, the Ordinance 2024-001 passes. I hope in the future, as the Assembly looks to me making changes that they give us a little more heads-up notice as to why and the rationale. So... Moving on, Ordinance 2024-002, amending Section 1710-230 Rural Residential District in Section 1710-240 Single Family, Two-Family Residential District to allow daycare centers as permitted principal users introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Councilmember Hutchings?
I will make a motion to enact Ordinance 2024-002, amending Section 17.10-230 Rural Residential District in Section 17.10.240 Single Family, Two-Family Residential District to allow daycare centers as permitted principal users.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson. A report from the city manager, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. For this ordinance, I'm going to turn it over to Director Zarneski for further information.
Thank you. So for this ordinance, under our current code, required daycare centers to obtain a conditional use permit in the rural residential and single-family, two-family zoning districts. And to date, we have not had any issues with those daycares in those districts. And so we were questioning the need to require them to go before the Planning Commission and incur a $250 fee and then a one-to-two-month waiting period to get their permitting, when in fact, again, we haven't had issues. In the other zoning districts that allow daycares, they don't require a conditional use permit. They just require an administrative permit. And what we're proposing here is that all of those zoning districts that allow daycares just obtain an administrative permit rather than the conditional use permit. The Planning Commission recommended this and passed it unanimously. And again, the approval of the ordinance would allow for quicker processing, reduce cost, and it would maintain our current standards as written in the code. In other words, daycares would still have to be state-licensed. They would still have to provide a screened outdoor play area. So that is the end of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Zarneski. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one in council chambers. There's also no one on Zoom. Are there any council member comments? Yes, Mr. Chilson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to speak to this one. First of all, I would like to thank our administrative team for putting this together to bring before council. I think, as we all know, childcare is a crisis that we are dealing with nationwide, and there is no particular single action that I think is going to solve this. It's going to be a culmination of a number of different things, and anything that we can do at a city level to help mitigate the strains that this system has, we absolutely should do. I just share a story. So as a new parent in the last year or so, when my wife was three months pregnant, we knew that childcare was going to be an issue because we both work, and we immediately started looking at our options. There's not many of them in the Saldana area. We went to one of the main daycares here and asked what the process was to get on that, and they're like, "Well, you can jump on the waiting list and get right in queue." So we got on the waiting list three months in. Our kid was born, and we still had not moved close to the next spot on that one. We were very fortunate and were able to find a spot in a small Kenai daycare and have since relocated to Saldana. But it's a struggle, and I've been through that, and we were fortunate enough to make it through. But there are a lot of families that are still struggling with that. So I am extremely grateful to see this here before us tonight and wholeheartedly support it.
Any other council member comments? Mr. Nelson?
And I certainly can agree with the shortage of daycare centers. And I maybe have a question here for administration. It might be Mr. Zarneski. So I know that you made comment that there was little or no problems currently indicated. So I guess it's kind of a two-part question is, one, do you have an idea of how many permitted daycare centers currently operate in the city in the single-family, two-family district? And I guess just ask you to expand a little bit on that. I have a little bit of thought of, all right, if you're putting a commercial business in a residential area, you know, you always have things like traffic and noise and some of those things that maybe aren't conducive to residential, and you may or you may not. So I guess maybe, could you just expand a little bit on maybe how that use complements that zoning district? If that's not too vague of a question, please.
Sure. I'll do my best through the chair. So first, there are two licensed, state-licensed daycares in the city of Saldana. One is Creative Play here on Readout, which is in the Commercial District, and the other is on Lord Baronov, which is in the Single Family, Two-Family District. So that one on Lord Baronov did require a conditional use permit. There haven't been any, again, any issues there. And the Planning Commission through the years has issued a number of conditional use permits for daycares in various locations in single-family rural residential. And again, through that process, there has not been an issue personally. Kids in a single-family-- an issue personally. Kids in a single-family, two-family district makes sense to me that it wouldn't be, that it would be a comparable use for residential areas. We do provide for the requirement that outdoor areas be screened. That has never been an issue. We have not received any complaints from neighbors with regard to noisy kids or anything, problems with traffic. The only issue we've ever had with daycare was on the corner of Readout and Kobuk, when the planning commission rejected the conditional use permit for daycare there. It was appealed. The council overturned that and granted the, the permit. There weren't any, there weren't any complaints or issues. It was just that process raised eyebrows at the time and made it into the newspapers. But after it was licensed, it only lasted about a year and then it disappeared. But there weren't any complaints or issues. So I do feel that daycares are very comparable as a land use for the residential zoning districts.
Paul?
And can I just ask one more question? Is there a limit to, and I assume this is going to be state regulations, is there a limit to how many children can attend the daycare in this district or in any district? Is that something we or the state address?
It is. So we require a permit when it's over five kids. And that's basically also the state standard. So anything less than five, you don't need the state license. The limit, I believe, well, I'm not, I can't speak to the, to the state, what their max is. I believe it might be 20. And then I think it may get into a different classification. They look at it a little differently than they do the smaller daycares.
Any additional questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember Whackler.
So when things go through the commission to get conditional use permits, there's usually like a process where we publicly advertise that this change is happening so that people give it, get a chance to comment on it. It going to an administrative process, are you concerned at all that there are neighbors or anything that wouldn't have a chance to give voice to their concerns? Or is it part of the administrative process that there's like an announcement to neighboring areas?
Through the chair. You are absolutely correct. Through the conditional use permit process, there is a public hearing, and neighbors are notified within 300 feet. And through the administrative process, that would go away. I don't have, again, a lot of concern with regard to the potential impacts. Certainly, if there are issues after the fact, they have the ability to call and complain and say that there's, there's problems. And then if there's violations with the code, we can, we can act on them. But you certainly are correct that that, that process to notify neighbors will be eliminated.
Paul? No. Seeing no additional questions from council members. Call for the vote, please.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
On a vote to six to nothing, ordinance 2024-002 is enacted. This brings us down to ordinance 2024-003, amending section 1710-25, multifamily residential to update the minimum lot size general standards introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact, please? Councilmember Nelson?
I'll move to enact 2024-003.
Second. Councilmember Hutchings, thank you. Madam City Manager, can we have a report, please?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'm going to ask the Director Zarneski to report on this as well.
Thank you. Again, through the chair. What we have before you, again, is an ordinance proposed by the administration and has gone through planning commission and received their support. This proposed amendment does two things, and it really stems from a recent, some recent development. There was a proposal to construct a duplex in the multifamily zoning district. And when we applied the standards to that, that development, we found that there was a disparity in the standards for creating a duplex in the multifamily district from other zoning districts that allowed duplexes. And so to build a duplex in the multifamily zoning district, our code requires that you have a minimum lot size of 8,400 square feet. But then it requires for every additional unit, additional square footage on that lot. So if you have a one-bedroom, you add 8,400 plus 1,600. If you have two-bedroom duplex, you add 2,000 square feet. If it's three bedrooms or more, you add 2,400 square feet. So the minimum lot size of a duplex in the multifamily zoning district can be anywhere from 10,000 square feet up to 10,800 square feet. Meanwhile, a duplex in the multi, or the rural residential and two-family district is just a flat 8,400. So what the ordinance does is basically suggests that, that the requirements for duplexes be similar in the multifamily district as, or be the same as they are in the rural res and single-family district. And it would create then the uniform size for duplexes across all zoning districts that allow them. And of course, one of the things that does is, is allow development on a slightly smaller lot, which potentially increases the ability to add more housing, more density. The second thing that this ordinance does is it eliminates a provision that increases the lot size proportional to the number of bedrooms. So I just explained how for every one, two, or three-bedroom multi-unit or apartment that is in addition to the first unit, the size of lot increases based on square footage. What, what we're suggesting is that we eliminate that and that we just go with a flat square footage. And we're recommending the lowest square footage. So again, the first two units in a, so let's use a fourplex as an example. The first two units are similar to a duplex. So you have your 8,400 square feet. The next two units, instead of being based on the number of bedrooms, would just be a flat increase of 1,600 per unit. So I have an example on page 40 of your packet, at least I believe it's page 40. And it gives the example of that fourplex in the, the multifamily district and the examples of fourplex that has three-bedroom apartments. And so using the formula that's in the code, you would need 15,600 square feet for a minimum lot size. Under what's proposed and before you today, by standardizing it, we would have a lot size of 11,600, a reduction of almost 4,000 square feet. So again, the approval of this ordinance would allow for greater housing density, potentially less development cost per unit, and would still require a maximum lot coverage of 30%. It would still require a minimum yard setbacks, and it would still require, you know, all the parking and landscaping that's in the code. But it would increase the ability to have more units per acre. And that is the end of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Zarneski. Are there any members of the public here who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one. Anybody on Zoom? Oh, come forward, please, sir. State your name and...
You have to...
If you, if you could come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Sam Brow. And I guess the question to you is, what is the appeal of having higher-density housing, besides the cost savings of the contractor or the owner?
Through, through the chair, if I may, the appeal of higher density is just the ability to provide for, for more housing. We currently have housing shortage in this area. And by creating a environment where the market is more favorable to developers, we hope that that would create the attraction to them to develop more, more apartments, more affordable housing units than we currently are seeing.
We don't have a shortage of land. So that's just my opinion. I just, I don't want this place to turn into California where, you know, you're looking at your neighbor's bedroom window.
Can you, can you again provide us your name, sir?
Sam.
Sam.
Brow. B is a boy. R O W.
And your address, sir?
P O Box 1161, Saldana.
Thank you. And Mr. Cox?
Thank you. So I, I actually, I personally support this on a personal level, not as an assembly member, because real estate is what I end up doing for a living. And I can tell you right now that part of the issue, too, is, is that lot sizes in the city of Saldana, there's not very many that you could build very many residential buildings on. And so with that is, in reducing that, it probably opens that up a little bit. And the other thing I would just like to put in as a suggestion at this time is to look a little bit at the parking for residential rentals. When you have buildings that are built for one bedroom, right now, I believe, and I can be corrected, but I believe it says each unit will have two spaces. I don't know that that'd be necessary at one-bedroom units or efficiencies to have two spaces for each one. And I think that will limit also what kind of parking you can have in those areas. I definitely understand two, two parking spaces on a two-bedroom or, or any larger. But I believe the way it reads is just any residential home or anything like that is two spaces per, per living unit. So it can be a house. It can be in a fourplex. That means you would have to have eight, eight parking spaces regardless of what size the unit is. And so what I would ask is to possibly look at that and look at what size those units are and maybe do it that way to be a little more fair on what kind of space, especially if we're looking at minimizing these lots. That may be something that needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any questions? Anybody else who would like to testify on this ordinance? Seeing no one here. Anyone on Zoom?
No.
All right. The item is back before the council. Any council member comments, questions? Councilmember Whackler?
It's more of a housekeeping. Is the spelling correct in section one that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the city council amend section? Is that supposed to be amend? Or am I... Their pass tends to amend pre.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
That is correct. It should be amend versus amend. Thank you.
That's a technical correction. Any other comments, questions from council members? Seeing none. Call for the vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry, I paused a little bit, too. I'm just wondering if staff could comment on the suggestion that was made dealing with parking. Quite frankly, I don't know enough about that. But again, it just sounded like a very reasonable request to make. And so I'd be interested if that's something that we should consider at some later time adding to this.
Through, through the chair, Mr. Carey. That is something that we're very much aware of, and we are in agreement with Mr. Cox's testimony, that sometimes we are over-parking many of these uses. The refinement of the parking code is one of those on our checklist, and we hope to get to it soon. In the meantime, I can tell you what we do is, if we have unique situations like that, if someone is putting in just single, single, or units with just a single bedroom, we have the flexibility within our parking code to grant waivers to a lower number. And that is something that we have been doing, not only for those kinds of situations, but also in some cases where we've got different types of, for example, restaurants where the main part of their business is carryout rather than sit-down. It gives us the flexibility to reduce those numbers. But we would like to correct the code or amend the code to address what Mr. Cox is suggesting to bring those parking numbers back to a more reasonable number.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Pause, just to make sure we're not rushing. Seeing none, call for the vote.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. The ordinance 2024-003 passes by a vote of six to nothing. That brings us down to item nine on the agenda. Mayor and council report. Oh, that's right. I didn't mark that off. That's the resolution, Mr.?
003.
003. Resolution 2024-003, thank you for keeping me on track, requesting the state of Alaska make a meaningful increase to the base student allocation for public schools brought by the mayor. And Councilmember Chilson may have a motion to adopt.
Thank you. I'd move to adopt resolution 2024-003.
Second. Councilmember Hutchings? And report from councilperson Chilson.
Before we continue, Vice Mayor, just to be completely transparent, I wanted to bring forward a possible conflict of interest. I am employed as an IT manager for the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District. Last year, when we had a comparable resolution before, it was not determined to be a conflict of interest. But again, I would like to be fully transparent and bring that forward for your consideration, whether or not that is a conflict. I would clarify that my employment and the continuation of that or any corresponding compensation has no dependencies upon the BSA.
Thank you for bringing that forward. I see no conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to have this resolution before us tonight. This is actually kind of following up in the wake of a similar resolution that was initially brought forward for the Kenai Peninsula Borough Assembly. And I believe there are comparable resolutions working their way through all the local municipalities in our area, and this would be ours. This is something I care passionately about. It's, you know, education has been something that I think we've struggled with as a state for a number of years now. We've had no meaningful increase to educational funding in the state since 2017. And I could speak to, you know, to this for some time about the merits of this as far as how it impacts education. But I think from our purview as a city, you know, we can look at it from how this affects the people that live here. The local school district is a very large organization. It spans the entire borough, as we know. But right here in the city of Saldana, it has the densest presence of educational facilities. We have five schools right here. If you just stop and think about the amount of employees that live within the city of Saldana, work within the city of Saldana, there's a lot of people here in the workforce that are tied to this system and the number of students. When families are looking for places to come and set up and work and raise their families, education is a huge thing. People aren't going to want to come and live in Saldana and work and establish their lives here if we don't have a very well-performing and sustainable educational system to support that lifestyle that people are wanting to establish here on, on that note of lifestyle, quality of life for our residents. Every year, when we seem to go through this budgetary crisis because of the lack of sustainable funding for education, one of the things that puts our local board in a position of having to do is cut services and not just educational, but also services that are provided for the community at large, things like pools and theaters. These are things that have a direct correlation to the quality of life for our city of Saldana residents, and again, tie back to the economic activity that we're able to generate from drawing people to live and work here. So I believe that's a very strong point that we need to consider from a local municipality. So I would appreciate your support on this, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Bringing it back, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this items before the council at this time? Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Tyson Cox, Saldana. First off, as I'm a huge supporter of this, I have discussed this with most of the cities. I was one of the co-sponsors on the BSA for the borough, and I can confidently say that... on the B S A for the borough, and I can, um, confidently say that the Borough Assembly is hoping that the cities write their own B S A resolutions as we did ask for the, a copy of ours to go to each city. Um, I don't want to put any pressure on you, but as of now, Kenai, Seward, Homer, Seldovia, and Ketchumac have all passed similar B S A resolutions, as, as did the, uh, Kenai Peninsula Borough, um, most of which are unanimous, not all of them are, but most of which are unanimous on approval. And, um, briefly, I just wanted to give you a reason of, of why I really support this. It is about community. Um, I've been on the Borough Assembly for several years now. We have this discussion every year. And what seems to go down is, um, the school district comes to us, they have to bring us a balanced budget. What that means is they have to put on paper some very significant cuts at times because they're only allowed to really go off of what there was last year in designated funds, which would be the B S A and anything that's been designated before. One-time money, they do not count because it's just that one-time money. We don't know if that will be coming back. So that's what happens. The school district gives us that budget. Um, most of the community is up in arms because it has things on it like we had spoken about, uh, uh, Mr. Chilson spoke about was like your, uh, pools, your theaters, things like that, sports. These are all things, when you get down to the nuts and bolts of education, they're important, they're super important. But if we have to talk about what has to go, we have to keep the base core of education, and that's just the way it is. And so we will get that budget, and then we go and we have to budget as much as we can and, and whatever we're willing to do up to the cap. We do that without knowing what the state's real budget is. And then finally, in July, if we're lucky, we get a state budget. And that state budget then has usually one-time monies in it. So then the borough or the, I'm sorry, the school district comes back and they amend their budget to add those funds in, which then community gets up in arms about that because there's a lot of belief that there's hiding of money and those kinds of things. What I'm getting to is, is I have seen this tear our community apart for several years. Um, a real answer would probably be a forward fund. I don't think that's an answer that's accomplishable. But I do believe a B S A is something that's accomplishable, and I think it's something that we could move towards fairly easily if we can get enough of our legislators to believe that that is important to our communities. So to me, it's more, it's, it, it is about the money, we do need that, but it's more about our community and trying to keep our community together rather than fighting on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience here who would like to speak on resolution twenty twenty four zero, zero, three? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay, the item is now back before the council. Are there any council member comments? Councilmember Carey?
This is a very important and very positive thing. I would hope that within the discussion of increased funding, we'd talk about a significant increase in vocational training and programs, uh, to allow a, to meet the needs of more of the students. I would hope there'd be a discussion of the curriculum, which is still based on a nineteenth, early nineteen hundred agrarian society. I don't think most of us are farmers, and we have to be sure that, uh, we're available to help harvest and plant. Discussion of a four-day possible week with many other things in terms of that, that day that, uh, um, would seem to be open. So no question, this is a good thing. I'd hope the discussion would, uh, deal something with, uh, the retention, the retirement for teachers. The idea of making people teach and they don't have retirement for sure. Uh, if you want to retain people, you need to be able to promise them a future. I am a retired teacher. I'm very proud. Thirty-some years teaching here. Again, I came here and spent my life here because of belief in the quality of life that teaching provides. We are doing a huge disservice to our community that we do not provide a real retirement, that we do not provide comprehensive vocational as we did when I was a student in our school district here. So yes, it's always interesting to have the words to provide for a meaningful increase, and again, the debate on what that means. But yes, everyone should support this, but I think the discussion goes much further than simply a B S A. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from councilmember Whackler? Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just want to agree with Ty that obviously, not obviously, but to some, obviously, um, doing forward funding would definitely change a lot of our lives. But that being said, that's not before us. Um, we don't have the ability to do anything about that at this time. Um, but pools and theaters were definitely on the chopping block, and they're usually the first thing to come up in, um, budget discussions. They're kind of one of the easiest targets, and it gets a lot of people riled up, I think partly because, um, not just in the city of Soldatna, but especially in the city of Soldatna, we don't have any facilities that the city runs to be able to, um, to compare with what the schools offer. So like other people have stated, yes, us supporting the idea that the B S A will go up would increase our community, um, the health, wellness, education, everything. So I'm for it.
Thank you. Other comments from council members? Uh, seeing none, can we have the vote, please?
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Absolutely.
Six yes votes.
On a vote of six to nothing, resolution twenty twenty four zero, zero, three has passed Soldatna City Council. Moving through resolutions, I see none others that have been removed, which brings us down to the mayor and council reports. Um, I see nothing in the mayor's report. I know the mayor is attending via Zoom. Did you have anything you wanted to comment on, Mayor Whitney? He's shaking his head, no?
Uh, had to find the right button to push. Uh, I just wanted to thank everyone for, um, uh, the B S A vote. Um, I think that's a very important thing for not only Soldatna, but our entire community, and, uh, thank you for that.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney, and be safe out there and safe travels. Brings us down to the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District meeting report from Mr. Zarneski from January eighteen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. As you said, uh, the eighteenth of this month was, uh, the meeting, and this was the first meeting with our new executive director, Cassidy Cameron. So, um, that went well. She has, uh, the board's support, respect, and we're all confident she's going to do an incredible job with the district. So we're, we're looking forward to, uh, continuing to work with her. Cassidy did share some of the highlights of the last year. It included, uh, the twenty twenty-three, uh, Industry Outlook Forum in Homer. We had over a hundred people that attend that. Uh, she talked a little bit about, um, the SED's update and approval. K-PED also sponsored a Kenai Peninsula Mariculture meetup, which was just the, the folks in the Ke- the Kenai Peninsula area that are involved in the larger mariculture discussion across the state. And other things that she, she mentioned include the, the website development continues, business, uh, support and consultation continues, and, uh, the K-PED, if you weren't aware, was featured a couple of times in Alaska Business magazines. Um, so she wanted to share that. In twenty twenty-four, this year, the Industry Outlook Forum is going to be held in Soldatna at Sports Center on April twenty-fifth. Usually it's held in January, but this time, uh, we're gonna try shifting it to a time of year when hopefully it'll be a little easier for people to travel across, uh, the peninsula. Uh, there's going to be presentations on, uh, labor market, workforce development, uh, business, uh, I should say, employee retention and recruitment programs. The Soldatna Riverfront redevelopment is going to be a showcase presentation, so, uh, that, hopefully I'll, I'll do something nice for that. We'll see. Um, and we'll have additional presentations on broadband, mariculture, and key economic trends. Apart from that, uh, the uh, K-PED is also involved or is considering assisting the Alaska Department of Transportation in the creation of a RPO pilot program, RPO being regional planning organizations. And the idea here is to identify local planning, transportation needs in the non-metropolitan areas, um, and try to facilitate transportation planning to these smaller units of government. So, um, K-PED has agreed to help with the coordination and the communication of, uh, of those RPO meetings. There'll be one RPO for the entire, uh, Kenai Peninsula. Uh, one other bit of news is that Cassidy was selected to attend the Foraker Group's Executive Leadership Program. So that was a, an honor for her, and she will be attending that, I believe, in February or March. And that is the end of the K-PED report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zarneski? Uh, seeing none, I did, did you guys, I read, uh, I believe it was in the Clarion where there's been slight population increase in the state of Alaska, and there are two areas, two boroughs where there were population increases, and one was Matt Sue, and the second was the Kenai Peninsula Borough. Did you guys talk about that? Identify what parts of the borough were seeing population increases?
We didn't, and it's probably because the, the population increase is relatively small, I believe it's a percent uh, increase compared to the decline in the rest of the state. But it, like you say, it's still positive in the sense that people are recognizing opportunities on the peninsula, but, uh, it, it might be something that actually comes up when we talk about some of the economic trends and indicators, uh, during the Industry Outlook Forum, um, but it's not an item that we had specifically, uh, you know, that we discussed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, seeing nothing further on mayor council reports, that brings us down to the city managers' report.
Vice Mayor, I have a report for the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, I'm sorry, it wasn't on here, but go ahead. Go ahead.
Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors met this last Thursday, the eighteenth. Uh, it was our first meeting of the year and presided over by the new president of the Board of Directors, Chuck Winters. Uh, if you know him, I think he's going to do a good job, um, guiding that board, uh, for the foreseeable future. A couple of key items that were discussed during our board meeting, uh, the chamber staff has, uh, received their new visitor guides, which they'll be, uh, getting ready for distribution throughout the state, uh, to help attract people to the Soldatna and greater peninsula area. Additionally, um, they are partnering with the Kenai Chamber of Commerce to put on their first scholarship fair, which is going to be occurring on the twenty-seventh over at the Kenai Chamber Building, uh, from ten AM to one PM. And there's going to be a good number of community partners there, uh, to help, uh, hopefully, college and vocational-bound students find scholarship opportunities to help assist in those dreams. And then, um, lastly, their staff is working on the Frozen River Fest. Uh, everything is in motion on that to, uh, kick off on February seventeenth, and very excited to see that opportunity, uh, come back to the peninsula and just have a lot of, uh, people come out in the winter. There's not a lot to do, uh, much of the time here, so it's just great to see those, uh, those events happening. So kudos to the chamber staff for making that possible. Uh, I did want to share some of the upcoming luncheons that we have, uh, going on at the chamber, in case you're interested in attending. So this next Wednesday, the thirty-first, over at the Soldatna Library, they're going to be doing their Student of the Quarter Luncheon. And then additionally, our chief Meek is going to be presenting on the Soldatna Police Explorers Program, a fantastic one. I did that when I was in high school. It was great. I'm actually very much looking forward to hearing more about what's, uh, been going on at that in the years since I've been involved. Uh, on February seventh, at the Kenai Chamber, Commissioner Bishop of, uh, Department of Education will be speaking on that one. And then back in Soldatna, at the Sports Center on February fourteenth, they're doing the, uh, Love Soldatna because it's Valentine's Day, uh, just update on the chamber and a lot of the, uh, ongoings on, on that side of things. So, uh, look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you. Any questions? So recently, the chamber changed their meeting schedules, so what's their schedule for chamber board meetings now?
It's a good question. I have to look at my calendar every time. I believe it's, it's not monthly now. I want to say it's like every other month or every six weeks or something like that. It's, it's, it's on Thursdays always, but it's.
Yeah, if you could, um, either yourself or the executive director follow up so we have it on, on our schedule.
Certainly, I'll get a calendar over to a clerk. Um, but I want to say it's maybe every other month. My calendar tells me when I need to be there.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We move, any other reports? See, seeing none, um, city managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Um, one item that I wanted to report on is that we did receive information about population in the city of Soldatna from the state, and we approximately about fifty-plus, um, new residents in this, in the city, an increase over last year's information. If I remember correctly, that the two percent increase in the Kenai Peninsula Borough, I do remember reading that probably from that article that you referred to, um, Madam Vice Mayor. I, um, did want to, um, point out in the council packet that, um, beginning with this meeting packet, the second meeting of every month will have information directly from the department heads, um, to speak to their department activities, and that is included in this packet. The PAFR, as we call it, the Popular Annual Financial Report, is complete and is going out to residents. I, um, I would say that not every municipality does a PAFR, and I really am pleased that the city of Soldatna does a PAFR. I do think it is local budget transparency and, um, city information at its best. Um, it truly gives a very good look at the budget and our revenues, our expenses. And of course, if anyone has any further questions, we have our full budget, but this is an overview for, um, anyone who would like to learn more about it. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Uh, seeing none, we will move on to public comments. Are there, members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment at this time? Seeing none, is there anyone online? There is no one online. Brings us down to item twelve, council comments, and we will start with our student representative, Cassidy Noble. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. My report is much more boring than last week's. The school's doing good, uh, especially now that, um, all this new information about the B S A has come out. Now we're doing much better. It's, it's good to see that, uh, that the ball is rolling, uh, with the B S A issue. I know that, especially with the new structure of the, the government class, um, which is separate from the student council, the government class has been really trying to get involved with our, uh, with our local politics and the local, um, policies and issues that have been coming up. Um, and so the B S A, uh, has, has been huge. In fact, I, I have a friend, he's a senior over at Sohei. Uh, he wrote for one of his college papers, the, the whole thing on, um, I forget what the, the broad topic was, but it included a ton of information about the B S A and fixing, the, the borough deficit. And so it's, it's nice to see that these changes are being made, or at least, you know, trying to be made. Um, other than that, things are pretty mellow. Our ski team did good in Anchorage last weekend. Our boys got third, and our girls didn't do so well because, uh, our top two girls were down in Homer qualifying for international competitions, so they were doing good. Um, our basketball, they're working on it. Um, I, I saw them training today. They're, they're working hard to get better, and I'm excited to see where the rest of this year is. Thank you.
Thank you, Noble. Uh, moving on, uh, councilmember Whackler?
I have no comments, Ty.
All right, thank you. Mayor Whitney, do you have any closing thoughts?
Well, I got on the airplane at minus fifteen below. Uh, it finally reached freezing inside the airplane about the time we hit Anchorage and, uh, flew through Juneau where they have a lot of snow. And, um, now I'm down in the rainy season, so. So have fun. Kind of wish I was back home. Even though it's cold, it's nice, pretty days.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Moving on, Councilmember Hutchings.
No comment.
Thank you, Mayor, or Councilmember Carey.
Thank you. Three things. The fieldhouse presentation workshop, work session that we had today was excellent. I greatly appreciate. And again, I know the administration will continue to keep us updated and the community. And again, I just appreciate the work by staff. And again, it was just very helpful. I would like to request through administration to the administration that the council is presented with a revision of Code 1316040, dealing with the issue of costs, what the Rosens brought forward in terms of different costs and what I'd like to see, so that we can have discussion as was provided in the material they supplied. The different communities, Homer at zero, Seward 331, Kenai 479. I'd like to see a proposal that sets Saldana at 450, just a little bit under Kenai, so that would provide us with a chance to do more discussion. I would hope that we could have that in the next two months, please. And I understand that there's different things people are working on. And so I'm not trying to crush anyone, but I would hope in the next two months that could be brought forward for our discussion. It's always good to hear that Saldana is increasing in population. I think that's, it's very nice, particularly when the rest of the state is losing because of different things. Part of the reason our population is increasing is because of the fine healthcare that is provided here. There are so many different resources that allow us to live longer, and I'm glad to live longer and to have, be able to stay here, as many people are, because of that quality of healthcare. And so again, I thank all the people involved in healthcare, particularly in this area, keeping us healthy and also all the people that are having babies. That's a wonderful thing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Councilmember Nelson?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Chilson?
Thank you. I would just say that I got my PAFR in the mail like everyone else, and it's always exciting to see that. I love sharing them with friends and family that can board the city finances, but that one makes it a little bit more bearable, just how well put together it is. But other than that, just hope everyone stays warm out there.
Yes, thank you. And I have no additional comments. Apologize for the missteps along the way, but otherwise it all went smoothly. There is no need for an executive session, meeting announcements on February 7. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting at 5:30 here in the council chambers. On February 14th is the next city council meeting at 6:00 p.m. Seeing nothing further to come before the Saldana City Council, we are adjourned until our next session on Wednesday, February 14th at 6:00 p.m. Be safe out there and stay warm.